Thank you.
At this time, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Oakley Township Board of Trustees for the purpose of a work session. Present our trustee Augustine, trustee Ashroll and trustee Sweattick. Service Mike Behary, admin Susan Peterlin and in our audience, Mr. Pearl. Right, ready to have at it?
Stick again.
Let's go to 6.2 sick days.
And there's a notation from Martha on this section, but I don't, it says that she agrees with the revisions made by trustee Sweattick, but I don't have those revisions.
I thought I did share this with everyone.
Yeah, what you shared it in an email, I would have to go back and.
My. Email is completely being utilized for records requests, so I'm not going to dig for it.
Okay.
Middle of a request.
Do you want me to resend it to you or how about I print this last page or two?
If you could print it, I will go grab it and run a quick copy for everyone.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll print from here on down.
Perfect, thank you.
Hang on, old guy printing.
Let's see, I had. Everybody saved.
She's gonna be in there in a while waiting for me. How many copies was we want?
I mean, I can just run on your phone. Oh, please bring. Four, five. Mr. Pearl, would you like to copy?
Sure.
So we'll do six.
Oh, I think I see your comments are in the margin, yes?
Comments are in the margin, markups are in the document, yes.
Okay, do you have this version?
Because my email is right in the middle of records request where I've done a search, I just don't want to go through my.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, I just, I, I saved it to my desktop. I didn't know if you had saved.
Is it churning? Little squirrel in there is running vigorously.
Who's gonna take down that Christmas tree?
Lynn is, Jay, she, yes, cool.
She decorated it so she gets to take it down.
I'm seeing a halo right now from that car that just pulled up with their bright sun. Nobody else looked at it, looked directly into the light. And that's the email that you printed up that she's grabbing?
No, that's a document.
Oh, it's a document.
Hi, and then Jack, I've only got two more.
I'm working off of this.
You're.
I work off of this.
I have same. Go, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
So I don't see. It wasn't in 6.1, was it?
Which?
Any recommended changes?
6.2 is what section that Martha noted.
We had, we had finished 6.1 before we left, no changes. Then you'll see in the first paragraph where changes occur, I changed employer's discretion, the word employer to township in each of those sentences. And then the second paragraph down from that, this language agrees with everything that we're doing as far as the contracted employees.
Do we want supervisor? I think we've kind of. In the second paragraph underneath five. Or do we want to leave that there? It's different throughout the manual, we just didn't know.
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
A second paragraph. After number five, an employee who is ill and unable to work shall. So notify his supervisors, that's the word we want to use because we've used different words throughout the document.
After number five.
Which is E in your version, my apologies, I'm looking at the old version too.
What, I don't remember what word have we used throughout, does anybody recall?
Did we see, I think we said liaison and.
Department.
I thought it was department head and liaison.
And that's why I asked, because I just would like to see some continuity, it's again, yeah, great. Two paragraphs after that is the same, it says his immediate supervisor, that should be. Department head.
Well, it's said in reference to where we had changed it prior to, remember?
Let me look back. Here with me just one second.
There's attendance. Employee must notify their department head or trustee liaison prior to leaving, that's what it was.
Yeah, we have it noted in.
Yeah, I think we.
Yeah, we tried to change it, really.
And I think we put it in 4.2, which is the old version, so that may not match up, but maybe that's what you're referencing, Suzanne. Okay, so are you seeing it then in the fourth paragraph after E as well, Jack? If an employee is absent three consecutive working days or more than a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I would agree with that.
We're pressing on the first paragraph, starting at 6.2, so face.
Oh, good catch.
Good job.
Just might, we may change that to have the approval of the department head or trustee liaison?
Yes. That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Are we set that after three consecutive days of physician statements specifying employees inability to report to work and approbat date of recovery shall be required?
I think that's standard. I don't have any concerns with that, I don't know about either of you.
I just want to make sure we're all in agreement on it.
I agree with it.
Okay. It is in the old version, so I just wanted to make sure we were all in agreement. How do the department heads feel about the changes? In blue?
I think that's what the police department does also.
Department heads, new comments, Mike, Suzanne? You good? You have a comment?
10 years of full time service?
That's my concern is that some of our folks were hired under a different. Handbook. Mike, any thoughts? You guys are very familiar with this handbook, probably more so than any of us because you've been here for so long.
I've seen times that it's printed up in here, it seems like. It's good to have something in writing. Most of the places I worked, they generally pay out for. Some part of it, pretty much, but this is. It's fair, there's certain places that pay more and there's certain places that they lots. It's a happy medium. And I never heard the tenure service, but that's.
Well, remember that Brian Richter will be looking at this or that someone from the prosecutor's office will be looking at this. I guess I would just.
This was the same amount when I was still.
Yeah, I would just.
I think the county highway department. So don't quote them on that, but I'm not positive on that. And so they're, they're all over that.
I would just like the prosecutor to review this section specifically because I don't know that we can change it for existing folks that have worked here for 10 years. And were hired on the, under the old manual.
Yeah, I liked the suggested changes because I think it's. It's harmonious with what we do with the police department, so.
But what happens in your event, your police less than 10 years?
They're not eligible for payout.
And that wasn't in the old version. Just says employees hired by the, by the township prior to January 1st, 2014. And then there's no. Is there room here for folks that were hired after 2014, like before, that they will be paid accrued sick leave up to $3,000? Like the old language?
There, I don't see any old language in the old contract, in the old handbook, rather.
Well, it's right here in the red.
Well, that was a change that was put in by somebody that was never adopted.
But it's right here, this is the handbook. It says employees that are hired prior to January 1st, 2014.
That was inserted by, if you go in and look at it, that was inserted by Jim Burns, it's a suggested change.
This is the original handbook, this is Jim Burns's adaptation.
That's Martin Drap, see how it says draft on it?
But it was the draft that came from. This is, it is the original though. This one is Jim Burns's because it shows his edits in it.
22.
Of the one that former trustee Burns had, I'm on page 22, I'm not seeing it.
No, this is the current one. This is, this is what we're going off of, right? This is what has been issued to everyone in the past. Now with the red edits, but with.
So on Jim Burns's, it's page 19. This is the version that. The Brock Consulting did for us that I have in my hand, she took the language from this version. I just worry that we, like I said, that we've hired under one handbook and people think that they're accruing sick time and now all of a sudden it's just going to completely go away unless they serve 10 years. So I would like the prosecutor to look at it. At least in the other version, it accounted for those people who didn't necessarily work the 10 years, but if they accrued sick time, they would be paid up to $3,000, it gave them a little. A little bit back.
This is, this is the one, I'm sorry.
2008, which. That language that you're referencing was. Your draft with Jim Burns, but it was never adopted.
Yes.
Here's what you sent me at the beginning of the year, Melissa. It's a document, it says what you're working off of. And the, in the red is an edit saying at retirement employees 10 years after 14, whatever. Prior to that, the original language was, no employee shall be paid for any unused sick leave upon termination of employment. However, upon retirement, an employee may receive a cash payment for accrued unused sick leave as provided by trustee resolution or by law. That was the only language that is in it prior to us starting on down the road here.
Okay, so.
So this is actually an improvement upon what was there before.
That's okay, that's the one I'm looking at and that's the one that I've always handed out to everybody to Suzanne's point, July 21st, 2008, that was.
That was Jim Burns's version.
Right, but this one from 2008, this is the one that has been approved, that has been handed out to.
That is that current handbook.
So.
I just need to pull it up.
And the actually the language in there, though, with the suggested edit was hired before 2014 dollar amount not to exceed 250 hours. So what we're suggesting now is more than that.
No employee shall be paid for any unused sick leave upon termination of employment, however, upon retirement, an employee may receive a cash payment for accrued and unused sick leave as provided by trustee resolution or by law. That is what the current handbook says.
Right, that's what Jack just read. I have about 20 different versions of it in my computer, so I'm just trying to find the right one.
So with provision that this is going to go to the prosecutor for review?
Yes.
Do you find this acceptable to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we get to personal days? Anything there?
I do not have anything for personal days.
Okay, neither do I, vacation days? Mr., nothing in the first paragraph for me? For the second?
Now, the only thing. I was going to add into that last paragraph. Where you have granted written request and permission of department head or trustee liaison. To keep it consistent.
In the third paragraph?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, not the last paragraph.
Well, it is.
Before it's broken down, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see it like with all the different versions, so. I had a question on the last sentence of the first paragraph. Says when employees are eligible for paid vacation days, do not take the full amount of vacation time they could have taken in a year, that amount will be forfeited at the end of the year. And what's the end of the year, January or December? That they just get them at the beginning of the year, they don't have to the end of the year to actually, if they're forfeiting them at the end of the year, what's the end of the year consist of? The end of the fiscal year, is it an anniversary date, what's the?
I think fiscal and calendar year are pretty much the same. I'm gonna put calendar year in there.
The issue with vacation right now is we accrue.
Right.
So we accrue from.
Takes a year to accrue it.
Right now you. And you're not supposed to use your accrual until the next year. So that's where like I had some issues with the way the vacations work.
Right.
Really, so say like. You know, after like Brock one year. So now he's accruing his 80 hours, but really he's not supposed to use that 80 hours until.
Next year, the most two years in, take before you can actually use the vacation time.
And then if you go off of his years of service, well. And that's where like I said, as soon as it's the world confusing me, like years of service, certain people started at different times than others.
Right.
So. Do they have to wait another four year to get that extra week of vacation or does it accrue them or? That's, that's why I was saying it's vacations of.
To take vacation time in June, you're only.
Yeah.
4.6.
Right. So where is it? Suzanne, do you have where it is in the old, the original approved page? Or Mike, do you have it maybe?
It's 3.4 in the old one, page 20.
Page 20, thank you, 130.
Then it was page 15, 2008.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
It doesn't even say anything about bank.
Says vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned. Vacation can only be taken between April 1 and November 15. Which I don't agree with, I think it's.
That's for service department only.
I'm looking at vacation leave in section 3.4 of the, the 2008 approved handbook on page 15. Vacation time is subject to trustee's approval, request shall be submitted to your immediate supervisor at least four weeks in advance.
Yeah, but doesn't it, the part in there. Yeah, but doesn't the part in there, for, for the dates, doesn't it apply to just service in that section or no?
No, it does not. It says all full-time employees are entitled to vacation leave. Vacation leave shall be accrued at a rate of three point zero eight hours per eighty hours. Pay period for the first seven years of employment and accrual shall be four point six two hours per pay period during the years eight, nine, and ten. Accrual shall be six point one six hours per pay period for years in excess of ten. And then it goes straight on to say vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned. I think that's where the confusion lies. The new language doesn't account for that. Because we're, if you're accruing it through your first year and you can't take it that year, then you lose it, you forfeit it.
No, because you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have twenty-five days.
When an employee is eligible.
This is when, this is when employees eligible for paid vacation, not take them in the year they could have been taken, and they can't take them in that first year.
But then it says, goes on to say that that amount will then be forfeited at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So they, they're saying you can't take it, and then they're going to say you're leaving.
No, they're saying you can't take it in the first year, and then that sentence says, if you don't use it in the year, you can take it. So if you don't use it in the following year when you're eligible to take it.
If it's.
And it's in excess of.
Said following year, I would completely agree with you. If it said that amount will be forwarded at the end of the following year, then I would completely agree with you. But right now it says at the end of the year. Maybe that's all the change that needs to happen.
I, I agree. I think it should say the following year. It's.
No, it's because it's speaking to the year in which you could have taken them.
But the year that you're accruing it, you can't take it. Because you're still accruing. So I just.
That's what it says.
The language here from the old one, it just says the year following, the year that it's earned.
Okay, when employees eligible for paid vacation days do not take the full amount of vacation time they could have taken. In, instead, instead of saying in a year, in that year. Does that make sense? Is that more clear?
I just, maybe we should just take the sentence from the old and insert it here. Vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned.
Just say, use it as you get it, tell the employee, run out, run out.
I, I, I would be fine if you changed that word or just taking that sentence from the old one.
Vacation shall be taken the year following the year that it is earned.
That leaves no questions then, right?
It's clear.
So then there's no carryover of unused vacation time?
What do you have now? I thought you had carryover now.
Well. I'm looking at it. It says in special circumstances, this is the current. In special circumstances, an employee may be allowed to accumulate and carry over vacation leave to the following years upon written authorization of the employer. And that's what we're currently doing. But what's in the new language?
It does say that.
Okay.
It says that in the second last paragraph. In special circumstances, an employee may be allowed to accumulate and carry over vacation leave to the following year. Upon written authorization of the township.
And actually, Jack, that sentence we were looking for from the original, the vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned, is in. That's the first sentence of the third paragraph in the new one. She could probably just copy and paste it.
So I'll take it out of the third paragraph.
Do we want to incorporate the language from the old where it states that vacation can only be, is vacation time is subject to trustee's approval?
The. The sentence, the, the third paragraph, we're in the one we're working on right now. Says only one service department employee at a time. They take vacation between November fifteen and April first.
And it says vacation time is subject to trustee's approval there, but do we want to add it at the end of the first paragraph? So it's for all employees. Because really, if Suzanne or Lynn or anyone goes on vacation, they generally will ask the liaison.
I agree.
So I'm move those last two sentences up to the first paragraph.
Okay. Thank you. And then are you comfortable with the dates provided for specific to service, Mike? Are you comfortable with the specific dates provided for service? It says only one service department employee at a time may take vacation between November fifteenth and April first. Because it used to say April first to November fifteen. Because that's your busiest time. Is this, are the summer months and the fall. And now it's switched. Does that make sense? Now it says November fifteenth to April first.
Generally, you only worry about it.
Okay, as long as you're okay with it.
Other, the old saying, something else, the old ones said that. There could be more people on department.
It's in there. Exception, exception to this rule may be granted by written request and permission of the department head. Do we want to add in or trustee liaison?
I would say and trustee liaison, Ben, you're just reiterating what you've already said. Do you want to?
Where, where are we speaking?
So at the end of the third paragraph. Let me just read, exception to this rule may be granted by written request and permission of the department head. And it's my belief that we should write and trustee.
Or trustee liaison.
Or, yeah.
That's in there.
Okay.
Going back to the original one. That originally said vacation can only be taken between April one and November.
Right, it's switched, that's why I was asking.
No, it's not switched.
It's.
This is saying you could only take it.
It says it can only be taken between April one and November fifteenth, and then the new one reads that it.
Now you can take it, now you can take it in the winter, but just one person.
November fifteenth.
So this is more laid back.
No, this is, the new is a little more stringent because we're letting somebody have off in the winter now. Before they couldn't have off in the winter.
Right, so this one's more like, so you can actually have someone take.
That does.
One person.
Back and forth, this life.
It's going to be a party at the service.
Listen, there's a lot of coffee consumed before this meeting, I can tell.
Because there's times like now, it's not going to snow Friday, and when it snows, the guys are.
Right, yeah.
It's, for all intents and purposes, it is department head.
Yeah.
But for, for some reason.
Yeah.
You were out on a bender, you know? And then.
Well, I take that to mean, or trustee liaison, I take that to mean your guys are going to get your approval. But if you want to take the time off and you've already approved it for someone else, then you'll get Jack's approval for you to be the second. That's how I'm taking this. Whenever it says or trustee liaison, it's because the department head is going to be out.
And that's how it works.
That's exactly why I wanted to put it in there. Perfect.
Let's just revisit that first paragraph.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that you're all comfortable with the vacation days, regular full-time calculated based on employee's base rate. Hours worth, employees may not accrue more than twenty-five days of vacation time. Still good with that, right?
Yeah.
It's two hundred hours.
So you're taking the five weeks out of the fifteen year month?
Yes.
Every place else I have worked did that five weeks. It's something to look forward to at the end of your career and helps keep people. I mean, that's up to you guys.
Wait, I'm looking at it here.
Vacation will be taken the year following year it is earned, an employee eligible for vacation day, do not take full amount. They could have taken in a year, that amount will be forfeited at the end of the year. And we wanted to change that to end of the calendar year, of that calendar year, correct?
Well, that's one where you, didn't you just take that sentence?
I would have just taken that sentence out, the la, the one employee eligible for paid vacation, do not take the full amount. Because we already said vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it's earned. We can add to the end of that sentence, or it will be forfeited.
Well, if you can't accrue more than twenty-five. I'm sorry, say that again.
So the last sentence, when employee eligible, when employees eligible for paid vacation, do not take the full amount of vacation time. They could have taken the year, that amount will be forfeited at the end of the year. I would eliminate that sentence. And just add at the end of vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned, comma, or it will be forfeited.
You okay with that?
Yeah, it's just less wordy, so that's fine.
Are the department heads okay with that?
In the last sentence in that, is those two that I moved up, or vacation time is subject to trustee's approval. Request shall be submitted to the employee's department head.
Perfect. I think that's the hardest part of what we've got to go through. Thank you for making the edits on that. Edit edits. The edits.
Chief and editor.
All right, was there any questions on the second paragraph? About the accruals?
No.
The third paragraph now reads.
Only one service.
Only one service department employee at a time may take vacation between November fifteen and April first. Exception to this rule may be granted by written request and permission of the department head or trustee liaison.
Perfect.
Okay. Now vacation schedule.
Which is the same as what's written in the second paragraph, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry, what did you say in the first paragraph?
Vacation days pay for, for regular full-time employees will be calculated based on employee's base rate. Times the number of hours the employee would otherwise have worked on that day. Employees may not accrue more than twenty-five days of vacation time.
In one year or?
Period.
Period, so that would be for the year. Vacation shall be taken in the year following the year that it is earned, or it will be forfeited. Vacation time is subject to trustee approval. Request shall be submitted to your immediate. Are we putting department head there instead of supervisor?
Yes. Request shall be submitted to the employee's department head.
To employees. Department head.
Or trustee liaison.
Or trustee liaison. Are you comfortable with that, Suzanne?
I, I'm still.
I know it's a lot of change.
I was. Forgetting the twenty-five days of vacation time.
But it says later on.
Yeah, I feel like, is it, is it because of the gap that that's making you, because there is kind of, you know, because then it has the annual vacation leave. And then it talks about special circumstances, two paragraphs lower, but it does, it is in there. It says, in special circumstances, an employee may be allowed to accumulate and carry over vacation leave to the following year. Upon written authorization from the township, so it is in there.
So that's not really changing.
Right, right. And I agree, no, because I would have concerns about that also, if there was, I mean, things happen, so sometimes you can't use it all.
And I agree with the new language underneath the schedule. That in some situations, a special written contract makes this between the employer and the township, which supersedes. Because that does happen sometimes when we're making motions and bringing on new people with their vacation time.
I do not like that paragraph. I don't, what contracts, what separate contracts are there?
We've taken, we've, we've hired employees and transferred over their vacation time with them. Haven't we?
Police.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to acknowledge.
Not by contract.
No, but by motion, when we hired him, it's part of the motion. So we have to acknowledge that some employees brought on vacation time.
It doesn't change the schedule.
No, 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 but I think it's important to list this.
But that's what this paragraph is saying, it supersedes the schedule.
Well, Chief Sutner. There's these four reasons to.
Right.
They might want to. That's all the motions.
I think when Chief Sutner was hired, there was a motion that included vacation time as well.
I, I, the only thing I have an issue with is that contract, because it's not a contract.
It would be by motion.
Right.
If not defined in the hiring motion or the motion to hire.
Yeah, I don't like that paragraph at all.
Well, like I said, we've got folks that we had, had, we hired with vacation time. And it would, it would supersede the schedule. Because they were hired with it. Is there anyone else in the service department that we hired with vacation time? Just from my memory, I, I've been on board for Kenny, Jim. And Rob, and I, it's a blur.
I think, did we, Kenny?
I think we did.
I thought it was me and Kenny, and I don't know, Nick, the old boss, Steve, did he get?
Now that's before my time.
I know me and Kenny.
Yeah, I think, I think Jim did come with some, maybe it was sick time?
Well, sick time is all, that's all state.
Well, that's, yeah, so based on our advice code, you have to take that, yeah. Right.
How about we say a special agreement? How's that work for you? Or an agreement?
I would just say if not defined in the motion to hire, the employee vacation leave will revert to the schedule above.
Yeah, you could take out that whole paragraph and you could put that in.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that? If you remove that whole paragraph and just put that in?
I just know that we have to acknowledge it, as just said, if not, if not defined in the motion to hire, the employee vacation leave will revert to the schedule above.
Well, that doesn't address what somebody just said about police chief.
What do you mean?
It does.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
In his motion to hire.
You've got at least three people that were hired with their motion.
No, but we just granted the police chief additional vacation.
But that has nothing to do with his motion to hire. We're talking about when he was hired, he, he brought vacation time with him. They hired him and said, we grant him X amount of vacation time.
I get that. What I'm saying is now we have granted in vacation beyond this schedule.
Well, we could put in. Wait, this is the time to, to top it off.
Yeah, can you, okay, can you take that paragraph out and put in Melissa's sentence? And then, like, I need to see that, and then let me work through that of how we're going to do it with.
So we're going to eliminate in that, that paragraph following.
Just tell me what you want.
We'll, we'll eliminate the first sentence completely.
Just for. Just first.
And then we're gonna eliminate the third sentence. Where it says in these cases, vacation.
I would, I would take the whole thing out, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm just trying to help it in. Then all you have to do is tweak that second sentence to read. If not defined in the motion to hire, the employee vacation leave will revert to the schedule above.
And employee vacation, what, rate?
Will revert to the schedule above. So it means anyone who wasn't hired with, without vacation time, this is their schedule. So it, if not defined in the motion to hire, the employee vacation leave will revert to the schedule above. And then to your point, that we do need to probably.
Define differently.
I would just say in the motion to hire, but. Martha has all those motions, so we know when, when everyone was hired, what, what they were hired with.
That takes care of it hiring.
Okay, so let's go back to the schedule based on our previous conversation. Do we want to have a place that we top this off? Because right now, I think somebody brought up Chief Setner, but Chief Setner has eight weeks of vacation. And he's serviced us for four years.
Which he, which he bargained for in lieu of pay increases.
Yeah. So you have to let me know what you will have to talk about what, what you want to see there.
So if not defined differently in the motion to hire, or?
Or in organizational meeting? Because that's when it always happens, right?
Yeah, that's good.
And then everything else can go.
Spill organizational right there.
You're gonna capitalize organizational meeting?
Yes, if not defined differently in the motion to hire or in an organizational meeting, the employee vacation leave will revert to the schedule above.
Perfect.
Okay.
Through it, I mean, what do we have, two pages down right now? Four left, are we ordering pizza?
Let's move on.
I don't have anything with the, with the rest of it.
I just changed in that paragraph employer to township in two instances.
Okay, I don't have anything either.
Okay, 6.5.
I don't have anything.
6.5 was, we added to this, these employees eligible to accrue sick leave incentive days make cash out unused sick leave incentive hours once per calendar year.
You don't have that money, it's here.
I gave her a copy.
She's not reading it.
I have three different copies right here and two on my desktop, so.
So I changed the title there to payment accrued vacation leave compensation time and sick leave incentive days. Sick leave incentive days in, just applies to a single employee here, which is Kumi over at the police station. She was grandfathered in, in receiving sick leave incentive days. So.
Are they sick leave incentive days, or are they, what's it called?
They're called sick leave incentive days.
I think they're called.
Martha had to create a new category for it in the UAN system.
I need some sick leave incentive days.
I hear about it like every year in February when someone I know is saying, I feel like I'm coming down with something, but I'm just one more week away from my sick leave incentive days.
Okay.
All right.
No objections? Correct.
Well, I don't know how you can put it in there and just apply it to Kumi, we applied it.
It says those employees eligible to accrue. They're not for you. She was grandfathered in, in the police station.
But reading that, that gives guys.
So.
So was she grandfathered in, or was it during a motion to hire? Because we could stipulate that here now to clarify. So other people who get hired don't think that they're gonna get sick leave incentive days.
You cannot answer that with any degree of clarity.
I can't either.
She was hired in that respect when she came on in the police department, I know that for a fact.
Maybe you could shoot Martha a text really quick and see if she was hired with that status or she's just grandfathered in. And we can stipulate that any employee grandfathered in is eligible. I don't believe she was hired that way, but I don't know. While you do that, I'm gonna scooch forward in my notes and see if I have anything else for holidays.
Because was she, um, when she was union, was she part of the, or when she was a dispatcher, was she part of the union?
Probably.
Because that's what would make me think she would be grandfathered in. Because dispatchers are part of the union.
That was way to keep her on.
And that's a union thing is the sick day incentives.
So when we look at the holiday schedules, it's my understanding that Columbus Day and can be taken in lieu of the day after Thanksgiving. And that Veterans Day can be taken in lieu of Christmas Eve, is that right?
It's vice versa, so if you look at your government holidays, Columbus Day, Veterans Day are government holidays. And years ago, they decided to order Columbus Day as a vacation day and take the day after Thanksgiving.
For a holiday, yeah. Hello.
Hello, how you doing?
Dick, how are you?
Are you here for our meeting or another meeting?
Car Club?
Yeah.
It's in the old fire station bay, yeah, that little door that's right next to, yep, that's where it is. You too.
Can you believe he's not here for this?
No, it's riveting. So I just thought maybe we should put something in there that offers that option.
I can't imagine anybody wanting those other two days off instead of the two that are in here.
Well, if they're going on vacation and they. Yeah.
I know the county, we never had the day after Thanksgiving off, but they recognize that now. Also, they give Veterans Day off. It's actually more than one day.
I know that schools now.
I'm trying to throw your curve.
School, but schools are in session on Columbus Day now, and schools are in session on Veterans Day. So that's probably why it coincides with the school schedule. It's just a theory.
Schools are off for Veterans Day, aren't they?
That's when they have their little assembly.
Do the Friday before, aren't they, they're always off for Veterans Day.
I think, oh.
Because they do those special, I don't know, we can see these veterans.
Yeah, we have a whole assembly.
They do the special breakfast.
Columbus Day. They're, they're, they are in school, yeah.
Yeah, Columbus Day, they do like any OTA day or something.
All right, let's stay focused, we can get through this.
So do, how do we wanna banagel those days?
That's great, I was thinking Labor Day. I, I think that they should stay as they are written, because I actually agree with Jack. I don't think anybody's going to go for Columbus Day over like Christmas Eve or the day after Thanksgiving.
Department heads?
A little, little snowy out there.
Too many thoughts?
I'm in the way.
Okay. Like I said, you guys have been working with this handbook far longer than any of us. Okay, I just wanna make sure you're comfortable with it.
And I have nothing in the rest of that section.
Do we hear, hear back from Martha?
Nope.
The only other comment I would hand if I may, it doesn't necessarily say in the very last paragraph. When the holiday falls on the weekend, non-union employees take the next weekday as a big holiday. If the holiday falls on a Saturday, then we take Friday off. If the holiday falls on Sunday, we take Monday off.
Makes sense.
So.
I have that written down in the original version I got on January 3rd last year.
Hey, that's efficient.
All right, so what happens when Christmas Eve, uh, Christmas Day is on a Saturday?
Then you're.
You get Friday off Friday.
You already have Christmas Eve on Friday. It's a holiday.
There's a Friday.
Oh, now you want Thursday?
That's how that would, that's gotta look out.
Right.
Was that written down somewhere?
Where it was trustee approval, taking Monday off.
Well.
Yeah, we really don't have to worry about it for another five years. Because Christmas was just on a Sunday, but I.
You know, five years now.
She's thinking ahead, she's a mom. It's a good idea to clarify it, for sure. And it's not a time of year that we're busy.
So what would you like in the last paragraph?
It's like, well, some of us are busy, Melissa. I was, I was clear and snow on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Um, non-exempt employees who are required, no, wrong paragraph. When a paid holiday falls on the weekend, I think we should specify on a Saturday, it's observed on Friday, and if it falls on a Sunday, it's observed on Monday.
Let's cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm extremely comfortable going with that.
Jack, are you comfortable with that?
Working on it.
The comfortability or the language? And I can tell you right now, I don't have any other changes for the rest of this document. My goodness, there's a huge change.
I know.
6.8, I thought we were in the clear, and I flipped the page.
That's two pages.
All right, so when a paid holiday falls on a Saturday, non-union employees take the previous Friday as a paid holiday. When a paid holiday falls on a Sunday, non-union employees take the next Monday as a paid holiday.
Perfect, thank you.
Any issues with pregnancy leave?
No. But it seems we have an issue with the family and medical leave.
FMLA, I, somebody put all that language in there, and I just changed it to.
In accordance with federal guidelines.
Request in accordance with federal guidelines. For more information, contact township fiscal officer.
I'm very comfortable with that.
That's great.
We just knocked two pages out, look at that.
Rooker's cop?
No changes.
Bereavement leave?
No, sir.
Jury duty?
No, sir.
Voting time.
No, sir.
Military leave? Military family leave?
Nope, no, sir.
Court leave?
No, sir. Oh, there's a little change here that you have, the employee may use vacation. I'm fine with that. Well, it is, he just changed the used, which isn't proper English, to use. And then instead of just comp, he made it copy. Yeah.
Okay. Man.
The, see, manual, manual, manual.
Yeah, the agreement I agreed to me. Um, we just need clarification on the sick leave incentive dates for Martha. As for, as specifically to Kumi. Maybe we should just name her in here.
Last page.
Last page, the agreement?
Yes. Can I put two cents in?
Sure.
I always got something at the end, right? It says I, 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 V, I, I. And then the first signature is by a township representative. Shouldn't the first signature be by the employee? And then the township, township representative is.
I agree.
Just flip them.
They are the one that they saw the employee sign.
Yes, and I think it should be a township trustee. Not just a representative.
So your suggestion is to flip that?
Yes, I agree, yes, agreed.
Well, I think the first line actually should be printed name.
Printed name, then signature, then township trustee.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay.
Or you can have them. You could, I was gonna say, you could have the employee print the name at the top.
Oh, that's where it says employee that went there, yeah, I guess that's what that's for.
I would say print name behind it so that it's clear and concise.
Mr. Fraz, such a good thing that you come to these.
That's your.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so we're waiting to hear back from Martha, but, um, but we can send this.
To the prosecutor.
We can send this to the prosecutor, we don't need a motion or anything for it, right?
Correct.
So we agreed to everything, except we're waiting on that one, but we can send this to him.
I would say we should send it to him.
Are you in agreement, Jack? Are you in agreement, Jack?
I think we could do that.
And then while I have you guys here, just because we're here for the purpose of a work session, I wanted to see if I could talk to you really quick about that records request because I don't want to delay it for the recipient. I was sitting here through the zoning commission meeting, starting it, and I was, I had an inch of paper and I was only in October 22. So I did send an email to the prosecutor's office and just asked because I thought, well, gosh, I have to go back to June 21. I don't know how much more that's gonna be, and it seemed broad to me and as it concerned the timeline. And then you saw his response. So do we want to ask for more specifics on that and create a timeline that doesn't exceed a year?
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, we can. It's too broad and vague according to the prosecutor.
Well, our records retention policy is two years, correct?
But we can have them specify what they want and we can create a timeline. I've had the prosecutor's office do that before where they've said, you're only gonna give a month of that because it's too broad and vague. Or do you want to compose a letter to the prosecutor's office and have him review, have us review it at the next trustee meeting to be sent to him as to what we would like to see happen to it? I just, like I said, I don't want this person to wait. Car Club. It's and it I it's just very broad, all, 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 all. I mean, if we could say, you know, here are the emails, text messages, to be more specific. Mike, did you know that we had requested wheels put on the podium? That was part of our, I just wanted to see, I didn't want to think, I I thought, gosh, maybe we didn't tell him. Okay, well, something.
Stability.
Yeah. Whatever you think, I just need to. Okay. But can we make them so that they're nice and tucked under? They're not like the old one where they slid out from underneath the podium when we moved in.
No wheels and a hundred and fifty pound weight in the bottom of that, I mean.
And don't forget about my leg.
Whatever you guys determine, I would support, but I just would like to be able to have some mobility with it. I know, but I like it. It's clean. And it's not tearing apart. Okay, thank you. I was thinking about that today. It's like you read my mind. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Jack is the chairman. Maybe we just have you email the prosecutor and ask for his opinion as to what he would fine tune this to.
Do you want to last look at this before I do?
I'm talking about the records request.
Oh, what was that?
Do you want to send an email as the chairman of the board to the prosecutor's office and just ask them their recommendation on that records request as to how to fine tune it? Because we can be specific in what we ask for or what they ask for. We can say, you know, that's too broad according to the prosecutor. Um, we can provide X, Y, and Z, but I would like, I think he wants something verbally from us or written from us. So I'm just asking if you would send an email to to the prosecutor's office.
I would actually, if that's what you would like to do, I would prefer that as the records administrator that goes through Martha.
Okay.
And I did see her comment on that. There's any questions. She she sent that to him and said, please run it through her.
Okay.
I think that would be appropriate.
His response was that the trustees can make a decision on it.
On whether or not to honor the request. Yes, yes. But as far as fine tuning it, I would rather that, you know, that be a discussion that he had with Martha.
Okay, that's fine. Just cast practice has been when I've spoken to Martha about a situation like that, she would say, you'll have to contact the prosecutor's office and get clarification.
Okay, so the answer you get from her, I will.
Yeah, well, that was why I did what I did because I have been doing this for a while. Okay, so we're gonna send this off to the prosecutor's office the way it is now the handbook.
Okay, and that's what I was asking. That's what I thought you were talking about. Uh, do you want to have one more look at it? Do you want me to send it to you clean so you can reread it or?
Sure.
Are you okay with the way it is?
I mean, I trust that the.
I I'm okay with.
Yeah.
I think I think three meetings.
All right.
We dug into it and torn it apart.
And if there's something we see afterward or based on his recommendation, we can make those additional changes.
And I'm sure he will have recommendations.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we'll be reading it again and.
Probably.
We might not get it next year.
It might be March of 2024. Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Just my thing.
Last chance going. That being said.
Do we, before we adjourn? We are sticking, what did we decide? Are we sticking with 5:30 next week?
For right now, we only have, um, two. So, yes.
And if we get more and it's gonna take longer, can we change the the wording for the regular meeting that it will immediately follow the special meeting?
That way we can run long.
Yep, we can. So that'll be something we we're all agreeing to now so that if that comes up, you're able to notify the press. Yes.
Perfect.
Getting the hang of the protocol.
Yes, you are. I like the immediately following. That's a nice way to get out of here.
Disclaimer of the website too, that January calendar may change.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Suzanne.
And there's only three, there's only three days left, right? And you have two so far. There's only three days left to apply, and you have two.
Yes.
The ninth.
The 13th.
Good that it's not the ninth.
We just need one more to fill all those vacancies, so. Okay.
Right.
All right, now you can do it.
That being said, we will, uh, we don't make a motion to adjourn, do we? Make a motion to adjourn the work session at 7:19 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.